Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. The time is approximately 9:30. My name is Mike Kelly. I am the Chair of the Board of County Commissioners for Johnson County, Kansas. Welcome to today's meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. It is September 11, 2025. At this time, I'd ask the Clerk to please call the roll.
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Brewer, aye.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick here.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Here.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
Chairman Kelly.
Aye. All are present. Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is applied to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We have a proclamation this morning, so as I walk over the podium, if you'd all join me in checking your cellphone, or if you've brought another noise-making device to today's meeting, if you could ensure that it is turned off or at least silenced, we sure appreciate your cooperation. As we take a moment at the top of the meeting today, we do these proclamations on important days, recognizing important weeks. I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize that today is Patriot Day. It is September 11th, and I think we all remember exactly where we were or what we were doing 24 years ago today during the harrowing attacks in New York, Washington DC, and Pennsylvania. One of the things that we always learn from Mr. Rogers is that when there's times of trouble, look for the helpers. And among many others in the community that were helpers that day, we honor the bravery and the sacrifice of more than 300 first responders who lost their lives on September 11th, 2001. We recognize that public safety is essential to a community, but public safety is about more than any one particular service. Yes, it is our police officers and our firefighters, but it's also our rapid 911 dispatch and lifesaving ambulance care. It's our mental health co-responders who work alongside our law enforcement to help keep people safe, not only assisting to keep our officers safe, but to meet the challenge where it is. That's why I find today's proclamation incredibly meaningful. Our programs, like the Mental Health Co-Responder Program, our mobile crisis teams, are on the front lines. They are saving lives, they are easing the burdens on our emergency rooms, they are helping folks find care, and really putting them to the resources that they need. It's important and really crucial that our public safety is comprehensive, that it is collaborative, and at the end of the day that it's deeply human. But recognition alone is not enough. We want to make sure that we can continue to provide these essential services. We must ensure sustainable funding for all aspects of public safety, from crisis response and mental health services to 911 dispatch and emergency medical care. So today, on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, we proclaim September 15th as National Co-Responder and Crisis Responder Week in Johnson County, Kansas. We are honored to be joined today by our Sheriff, Byron Roberson, as well as Rob McDougall from the Emergency Services Department to accept this proclamation on behalf of the dedicated co-responders and crisis responders who serve our community. Sheriff?
Thank you, Chair, for those words. Appreciate those. This is a very somber day for, I think, most of America, so appreciate it. I'm just gonna say a few words, and I'm gonna also talk a little bit about our co-responders, maybe tell you some things that you don't know about them that I think that it's important to know, so that it is supported and it is something that needs to be supported in the future, because it is a very important part of the Johnson County Sheriff's Office and all local law enforcement in Johnson County. The Johnson County Sheriff's Office has two co-responders embedded within our organization. Co-responder Kim Hyman and co-responder Chelsea Musfeld respond with deputies to calls in Edgerton, DeSoto, Spring Hill, and all of the other unincorporated areas of Johnson County. They also collaborate with other co-responders within Johnson County to assist our ever-increasing population of citizens with mental health needs. Their contribution to the safety and effectiveness of Johnson County Sheriff's Office cannot be measured monetarily. The week before evictions are scheduled, a list is created of individuals set to be evicted. Kim Hyman reviews the list to determine if any of them are current or former mental health clients or elderly individuals. When she identifies concerns, Kim accompanies a civil deputy to visit these individuals prior to their eviction. She speaks with them about their plans for relocation and often contacts family members, many of whom are unaware that an eviction is taking place. In most cases, the family is able to step in and make arrangements, so the individual moves out before the eviction date. She also provides valuable background information with mental health clients who may pose a risk to themselves or the deputies on the scene. This allows us to allocate additional staff and resources to ensure the situation is handled safely. Our SROs requested the assistance of both co-responders on several occasions. Many times, the parents of students in crisis asked for the county co-responder specifically because of their outstanding reputation in the community. Although the schools have some social workers and counselors on staff, many problems stems from situations at the student's home or end their life outside of school. These are just a couple of numerous instances in which the co-responder assists the sheriff's office and our community to provide continuity of care for persons in crisis. The Johnson County Sheriff's Office thanks Kim Hyman and Chelsea Musfeld for their service. Thank you.
Good morning, Rob McDougall. I'm Director of Emergency Services at Johnson County Mental Health Center. Chairman Kelly, Commissioners, thank you very much for this meaningful recognition of Crisis Responders Week. I need to stop with the co-responders, because that's one thing that we are trying to increase awareness of, is our mobile crisis response team, so my apologies, Amanda and Holly. On behalf of Johnson County Mental Health Center, I'm honored to accept this proclamation and lift up the essential work of co-responders and our mobile crisis teams. Every day, these professionals step into crisis, whether it's a mental health emergency, a call from a family member, a family in distress, or a situation involving law enforcement, and they bring calm, compassion, and clinical expertise. Our co-responders work side by side with law enforcement across Johnson County, helping to de-escalate situations, divert individuals from jail and emergency rooms, and connect them to the care that they need. Our mobile crisis teams respond directly to the community, homes, schools, parks, the admin building, where there is need and we can safely avoid law enforcement contact or an emergency room. The past year alone, these teams have responded to thousands of calls, often under intense pressure and unpredictable environments. They've helped individuals experiencing suicidal ideation, supported families navigating behavioral health crisis, and provided trauma-informed care in real time. Their work is not only life-changing, it's system-changing. This proclamation is a public affirmation that mental health is public safety. The collaboration between behavioral health and law enforcement is not only possible, it's essential, and that the people doing this work deserve our deepest gratitude and continued investment. Thank you for your leadership, your partnership, and your recognition of the people who show up every day to serve Johnson County with courage, empathy, and professionalism. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. At this time, we'll turn to the public comment portion of our agenda today. It's an opportunity for folks to speak on county-related matters that do not appear on today's agenda. If you do wish to speak on an agenda item, there's an opportunity, and we ask you to sign up for that item in advance. Therefore, if you do happen to speak on an action item during this general public comment session, we're going to ask that you refrain at this time. When you do come to the dais, we do ask you to state your name and the community in which you reside here in Johnson County. We do limit these comments to two minutes. There's a clock on either side of the dais that'll appear to assist you with that time period. If you happen to go beyond that time period, we will ask that you conclude your comments. We do ask that folks who are commenting refrain from remarks that are personally offensive, impertinent, profane, or slanderous, and we ask that you refrain from insulting or demeaning any person or groups of persons. If we happen to stray into that kind of public comment, I will provide a warning. If it continues, we will ask that you step aside from the dais. We do allow public comment virtually, so when the Clerk is ready, we'll call on our virtual public commenters.
We're ready.
The first commenter is Cassie Woolworth.
Good morning, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Thank you.
Excellent. Hey, Cassie Woolworth, Olathe, Kansas. Been here before. I want to say thank you for the co-responder and the crisis people. I really appreciate their service, but I want to say also thank you to Johnson County for putting money towards those co-responders. We really do need some mental health going out with our police. I think it makes a big difference, and I love that they're looking at the cases prior to going. I mean, it's just, you've done such a good job. Keep it up. Very excited about that. Now, the Johnson County Board of County Commissioners has the opportunity to expand language access to the ballots. If you could put a resolution forward, it would help us immensely. We would like to get expanded language access, at least to Spanish, for our ballots. Can you imagine Spanish-speaking people going in and requesting a Spanish ballot and actually having, being able to read what's on the ballot? It would be great if the Commission would bring forward a resolution for discussion, essentially just saying that we need expanded language access. I would really appreciate that. And then, a quick thought about banning books, because I've been hearing some of that in the previous Board of County Commissioner things. You don't have to ban them, you can just not read them. If you all could just not read them and then not let your students check out stuff, you would stay out of my business. If you all could MYOB, that would be great. You guys should not be telling me how to run my family as much as I should not be telling you how to run your family. In fact, I believe I did bring an example of the Bible up here with all of its whoring. I wouldn't want that read either. So banning books is not the answer. Just don't check it out. Write a note to the principal and say, "My child can't check it out." It's pretty simple. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to our in-person public commenters at this time, starting with Ben Hobart.
Ben Hobart, Westwood Hills. Chairman Kelly and Commissioners, I must address Chairman Kelly's unhinged tirade of July 24th in his Commissioners' comments. Chairman Kelly, you spewed venom and vitriol in an irresponsible attack on Attorney General Kobach and Senator Mike Thompson. They both did exactly what the voters and the Kansas Constitution and Kansas laws instruct and empower them to do. You, however, mischaracterized the Attorney General's opinion, which stated that your sales tax proposition is null and void, as a, quote, "direct attack on responsive and responsible local government." To the contrary, this board's kitchen sink resolution was obviously outside the scope of the county's taxing authority. The board threw everything into the proposition that pulled well with the voters, disregarding the clear constraints of the original 2016 proposition. This board's only statutory authority was to extend the original proposition or reenact it. Instead, this board did a bait and switch on the citizens. While Attorney General Kobach and Senator Thompson did their jobs, this board disregarded the law. When called on your hubris, you engaged in name-calling, suggesting they are extremists. In the Committee of the Whole on May 1, Commissioner Hanslick and Deputy County Manager Julie Cairns made it clear that the $259 million of what had been capital expenditures for the courthouse, medical examiner's office, parking ramp, and adult detention center would now be rolled into the operating budget, letting your wasteful spending continue unabated for the next 10 years. This board should be embarrassed. The proposition's nullity was not a close call to anyone with a modicum of legal training. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jeff Harkness.
Jeff Harkness, Overland Park, Chairman and Commissioners. Every five years, the Census Bureau does a survey of state and local governments in years ending in 2 and 7. The results of these surveys show the structure, function, employment, and finance of state and local organizational units. Just remember, 2710, Census Bureau, 2710. 2027 is the first year of a new CIP cycle. I'm going to use the Health Service Building to kind of show you how I use it. The Health Service Building was funded during a time of rising interest rates, so I listened to all the inputs and came up with a second year that we might want to start it, depending on how the economy went. And I came up with September of 2027. On a two-year time horizon, that would put it completed in '29, which is the same year as the wastewater plant. Now, I hope interest rates go down next week, and I hope the county and the city of Overland Park are in the money. Looking forward to 2032, the Social Security Fund is insolvent. More money floating, more IOUs floating to the top. The budget process is a 12-month, round-the-year process. The county brings that up all the time. Mayor Scoog's brought that up at the meeting on Monday, and they bring it up too. So now that the 2026 budget is shut, the 2027 budget is in force. I claim, so I proclaim September 8th is the week of the starting of the '27 budget. Now, what we're going to find is property owners are going to look at their property tax bills and see that over half of it, well over half, goes to the schools and Juco. What is up with that, Chairman and Commissioners? How long has that been going on? I have, we have a couple options. Our dual payment system would state, well, maybe we should make one payment to the schools and the other to the remaining items. We might want to consider auditing these, what I call latchkey institutions, and consider letting them collect and bill and collect on their own.
Mr. Harkness, your time's expired. If you wanted to conclude your comments or...
And then we can have a one-bill system. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is Brian Perkins.
Good morning. Brian Perkins here. I currently reside in Olathe, Kansas, and I'm homeless. October and November, I was desperate for a shelter, and I was living at the city center of Lenexa, anywhere I could find a place to sleep, to somewhat stay warm, and I was desperate. So I took three buses to the airport, and I slept in the back of Cleveland. The first time I got away with it. The second, third time I didn't. I got, woke up and started to be trespassed. The second time, though, I was woke up with a flashlight over my eyes, waking me up, sleeping on like the trash bag. I had my clothes in it and my backpack. And I was asked to leave, and then the two questions that they stated were, "What's your name and when's the last time you've been picked up?" Well, I've never been picked up before. I was looked at as a criminal. Because I'm homeless, I'm a criminal. It's like this, assumed, judged. That happens all the time. We walk on the street and look at it differently, because we have a backpack on, maybe an extra layer of clothes, maybe they're dirty. It happens. It's real. What's the homeless look? That's the problem. There's not enough education to our neighbors and our communities, maybe even into certain city and local officials. I don't know. But that's how we feel. We're looked at as criminals, maybe drug addicts, alcoholics, but I just couldn't, I was upset, and I can't tell you how many times I've been asked or told, "You don't look homeless." What's the look? What's the look of being homeless? That could happen to anybody right now. With this current economy, there are a lot of things being stripped at the moment. I'm well aware. I'm reading. I'm learning. But that's where we need to find the middle ground, guys. It's going to happen to anybody very quickly right now. So let's, I mean, whatever we have to do, let's do it. You have some pretty awesome people right here, and they have a lot of great people. Let's get together. I mean, we can do this. Like I've said, love wins, and you can't stop love when it's true love. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Galene Van Horn.
Galene Van Horn, Lenexa. Chairman, Commissioners, indeed, today is a very somber day. Yesterday, Charlie Kirk was assassinated in front of the world for speaking without malice or violence, as stated succinctly by a pastor. The bullet tore the air in half. A folding chair rattled. A Bible dropped. A young man slumped sideways beneath a white tent, eyes wide with the weight of eternity. A wife and child mourn the death of their loved husband and father. Indeed, we are in a spiritual battle. Ephesians 6:9 to 18, Paul's lair written well in prison, in a cell in Rome, says, "You masters act on the same principle toward them and give up threatening and using violent and abusive not words, knowing that he who is both their master and yours is in heaven, and there is no respect of persons, no partiality with him. In conclusion, be strong in the Lord. Be empowered through your union with him. Draw your strength from him, that strength which his boundless might provides. Put on God's whole armor, the armor of heavy armed soldier which God supplies, that you may be able to successfully stand up against all the strategies and deceits of the devil. For we are not wrestling with flesh and blood, contending only with physical opponents, but against the despotisms, against the powers, against the masters' spirits, who are the world rulers of this present darkness, against the spiritual forces of wickedness in the heavenly supernatural sphere." Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Pam Randolph.
Good morning, Chairman and Board. I'm Pam Randolph from Overland Park, and I'm homeless. It is unfortunate and sad how homeless community is judged and labeled. In the eyes of the mind and minds of most of, we are criminals, drug addicts, alcoholics, or just bad person in general. We are labeled and judged by some business owners and employees next to the central resource library. We are being treated like criminals and like we have a bad disease or some sort. This happened to us earlier this week when we had that rain. When we tried to take cover from the rain, CNC locksmith and Eagle Armory employees contacted the Overland Park Police Department and had a few of us trespassed when we were just trying to stay dry when it was raining. I am not a criminal. I am just trying to get back on my feet. Please help myself and the... I am not a criminal. I am just trying to get back on my feet. Please help myself and the homeless community to get back on their feet. Please join us in hope. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe it's all the registered public commenters that we have for this general public comment session. So at this time, we're going to move to notes for the record, and I want to note for the record that I will be signing the following. First is Administrative Resolution Number WD-25-031. This is enlarging the privately financed sewer district and providing for the assessments of all applicable fees, charges, and levies of the consolidated lateral sewer district in the vicinity of 19510 West 87th Lane in Lenexa. Further, I'll be signing settlement participation forms in the nationwide opioid litigation settlements for Purdue Pharma LP and the Sackler family, and opioids manufacturers Alvegen, Amneal, Apatex, Hikma, Indivore, Mylan, Sun, and Zydis, per Resolution Number 109-21. Thank you. We'll move on to the consent agenda. It only has one item on it, but we'll take a motion for the consent agenda from Commissioner Hanslick.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Alan Brand, second.
A move by Commissioner Hanslick and seconded by Commissioner Alan Brand. Would the clerk call the roll?
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Brewer, aye.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Alan Brand.
Alan Brand, aye.
Chairman Kelly.
Aye. Seven in favor, none against. Is that consistent with your count?
It is.
Very good. We'll move on then to item number two, which is the reallocation and expenditure of general fund reserves for the Sheriff's Office for purchase of law enforcement vehicles and equipment necessary for the FIFA 2026 World Cup. Brian Seidler was at Agenda Review with us last week and provided a presentation. Mr. Seidler's back. Welcome. Anything further you'd like to provide at this time?
Good morning. No, nothing else to add. Can I answer any questions?
Thank you, sir. We're going to ask that you step aside. We do have a general public comment. Then we'll go to Commissioner Alan Brand for a question. I'd ask the clerk to let me know when we're ready.
We're ready.
Go ahead, Mr. Ben Hobart.
Ben Hobart, Chairman Kelly and Commissioners, the disregard for accepted long-practice budgetary processes is cause for concern. It appears as though this board is genuflecting at the World Cup FIFA altar, allowing anything and everything to be approved outside the normal course of your budgetary process. This happened with the big screen TV at the theater in the park with Parks and Rec. Despite the fact that the Parks and Rec Department has a fund balance of $18 million and should have been able to adjust their budget for a $300,000 item. Instead, this board raided county reserves as a funding source. Now, the Sheriff's Department is adding another FIFA-based request for $337,000 for various vehicles and equipment. The Sheriff's Capital Reserves, or Forfeited Property Fund, should be used for this purpose rather than general fund reserves, excuse me. Also, it is troubling that the briefing sheet indicates that if other funding is available in the future, the funds could be returned to the county. This should be mandatory, not permissive, with the, with the decision made now. With this request, if approved, the board has raided reserves out of the ordinary course for $20 million for the Evergreen Living Innovations giveaway, another $20 million for the Taj Mahal Health Services Building, approximately $300,000 for a big screen TV and other video equipment for Parks and Rec, and now $337,000 for FIFA equipment for the sheriff. From any reasonable person's vantage point, general fund reserves aren't so sacrosanct after all. This board reveals once again its hypocrisy. No relief for citizens. Limitless raids for pet projects. Thank you for receiving my comments.
Thank you, sir. We'll invite Mr. Seidler back, and Commissioner Alan Brand is the first comment today.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to say how important that I believe these motorcycles are. We just heard a person that just came up and was talking about what happened in a crowd. These motorcycles not only are going to be able to use for World Cup, but also other events, fairs and public speaking events. And we are seeing more and more issues coming up, even in our library and other places. So I think this is good money well spent. They can be used for a long time and in other different situations, not besides the World Cup. So this is something that we used to have motorcycles, and somehow we got away, and I know it's been talked about. So Chair, when you're ready, I do have a motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Alan Brand. We'll come back to you for that at this time. Continued comments. We'll go to Commissioner Ashcraft next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Seidler, there have been some references to possible, I'm going to use the term reimbursement from FIFA, FIFA.
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 FIFA, sorry, for certain, certain expenditures. Would these qualify, and do you know what the status of those potential reimbursements are?
I do not. I think the, the situation with the money for FIFA and allocated for the World Cup in general across the country is a little bit up in the air. I do know that Beau McCall is representing the county in those committees and in discussion with him. He, you know, he's aware that there's potential monies that will come to Johnson County, and if that's the case, our intent would be that those monies could offset these purchases.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but do you know any update on that in terms of when a decision point might be raised for those funds?
I, I know that it is soon, and I mean, given the status of the federal government and their budgeting process, that is always, you know, subject to their own discretion. $625 million was allocated for safety and security. The requests from the various host committee, host committees of the 11 United States cities across the country all put in plans that were validated by a third-party validator and OMB. And currently, they are establishing the mechanism by which those funds, which have been approved, will be dispersed. I don't want to guess and give you a date, but I know that those funds have been allocated. And so I appreciate Mr. Seidler's partnership here in agreement that if those safety and security funds were to come to Johnson County that they would offset this amount back into general reserves.
Thank you. And I wasn't trying to put you on the spot, but that's...
Fine.
That conversation has been floating for, for some time, and I appreciate the update. So, Mr. Seidler, in years past, when we've had new capital items come from the Sheriff's Office for opportunities that we've not historically provided funding before, we have used, I used to call it RECO funds, but I think we're calling it forfeiture funds now, to pay for those expenses. And almost a third of today's request is for one vehicle. Have we considered using those funds to cover the cost of the RECO, or cover the cost of the so-called paddy wagon rather than going into general fund?
The, with the forfeiture funds, we have, we've actually spent or earmarked quite a bit of those, of those funds here recently. We, we just recently received, got delivery of the Mobile Command Post, which, if you recall, was originally a $1.4 million project and based on price increases and some additional items that we wanted to add on there. That price went up, and we needed to add another $400,000 to that project. And so we had offered to pay for that price difference with the forfeiture funds. And so we've now received delivery of that vehicle, and so we'll be paying that, that money out of forfeiture fund. In addition, we have, there's quite a few facilities, projects that we're doing at the operations building with that, at the Sheriff's Office, that we are using forfeiture funds, and then some additional equipment, including some drones and some other equipment for the, for the office that we're using forfeiture funds for, so that we don't have to come back and ask for additional funding for those items that are not budgeted. And so we're already committing around $800,000 of that fund this year alone, and so that's why we didn't want to go any deeper into that fund.
And as I understand, the current fund balance is about $1.8 million?
Right, yeah. Right around there. Close to $2 million, yes.
Okay, so closer to $2 million, so we're going to have a million plus in reserves. So the, the other allocation, are they seen as being more important than the paddy wagon that's being proposed?
The forfeiture funds are really designed to enhance the budget and not to provide for critical services. And so the, these are, these items that we're looking at for the World, World Cup are considered critical to the need to provide public safety services. And so it's not really the intent of the forfeiture fund to spend for that type of, of item. But, yeah, we, we, just based on the amount that we have spent or earmarked this year alone, that's why we, we didn't consider that.
Thank you. Commissioner Brewer.
Remind me, are there already transport vehicles when you are transporting somebody from a different jurisdiction within the county out to, out to the correction center?
Yeah, we do, we do have transport vehicles currently that we use for that purpose, yes.
So will the addition of the van, is that something that, are you at a capacity issue with those transport vehicles currently?
The, the, this particular van, the way that it will be outfitted will include some inserts in the back of this, of a cargo-type van that will allow for better separation than what we, the vans that we currently have. And so if we had combative inmates or male, female that were arrested at the same time, we could transport them securely without having any interaction. We don't currently have that. The vans we have are more 15-passenger-style vans. And so this will be a cargo van with inserts in there that will have individualized compartments where we can put people to separate them better. And so, so that, in the event that we have, you know, several arrests at once, that will allow us to transport those people in separate compartments, kind of, so that we can have better separation. And then that's going to save the cities from having to leave the event and transport people to jail. And then we can continue to use that after the World Cup for that same type of service where we're going out and picking up arrestees from the cities to save them from having to transport to jail.
So we're looking at, system-wide, hopefully, some capacity and some cost efficiencies over time by being, being able to redeploy this particular vehicle in the manner to which described. And in your last presentation, you already shared with us, you know, not only the mobility that's afforded through the motorcycles, but also adding some of the bicycles to it will allow you for other large events. We just had a very large event this past weekend with the Old Settlers Event, being able to be more proficient in, in how you show up and provide security for those large community events.
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Not seeing further comments at this time. How about a motion, Commissioner Alan Brand?
Thank you, Chair. I move to approve and authorize the reallocation of expenditure of county general fund reserves in the amount of $337,000 to the Sheriff's Office for the purchase of law enforcement vehicles and equipment necessary to provide law enforcement services for the 2026 FIFA World Cup, FIFA World Cup.
I do the same thing.
I did the same.
Myers, second.
Moved by Commissioner Alan Brand, seconded by Commissioner Myers. Commissioner Ashcraft, further discussion?
Ah, yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I struggled with the Parks Department request for the, the big screen TV, and, and I'm struggling with this. I can understand the request for the items, and in many ways, they're incidental and could, could very well be part of the budget process. And in terms of using RECO funds versus general funds, if there's a reimbursement in the offing, then those RECO funds would be non-impactful. And so I'm concerned about that, and my vote will reflect that concern.
Thank you, sir. Not seeing further questions or comments at this time. I'd ask the clerk to please call the roll on the motion pending.
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Brewer, aye.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
No.
Commissioner Alan Brand.
Alan Brand, aye.
Chairman Kelly.
Aye. We have six in favor, one against. Is that consistent with your count?
It is.
Thank you very much, Mr. Seidler. Thank you very much. Thank you, Sheriff. At this time, we'll move on to Resolution Number 111-25. This is amending certain purchasing policies. Ms. Trent, our chief counsel provided us the presentation last week during Agenda Review. Thank you for that presentation. Anything further you'd like to provide at this time as we consider the item?
No, Chair.
Thank you very much, Ms. Trent. We do have public comment that is been requested on this item, so I'd ask the clerk to please cue us up.
We're ready.
All right. Welcome, Mr. Hobart.
Ben Hobart, Chairman Kelly and Commissioners, I am of the view that the revisions to your purchasing policies are ill-advised and not in the best interest of Johnson County citizens for the following reasons. One, with respect to purchasing policy 110-125, the preference for a company having an office or place of business located in Johnson County is not, quote, "in accordance with KSA 75-3748," end quote, as expressed. The statute does not reference offices or places of business at all. The statute focuses solely on the corporate state domicile of the company. Your change results in annulity. The policy is not consistent with the statute, and therefore cannot be in accordance with the statute. Two, also, the deletion of the statutory language from the policy creates inefficiency because anyone applying the purchasing policy now must find the statute and examine its terms, whereas before, the terms were contained within the purchasing policy. Three, the workforce development apprenticeship requirement and the disabled individual requirement will prejudice small contractors who cannot maintain a full apprenticeship program for each craft and an elevation of one apprentice to journeyman for each craft. This provision tilts the scales in favor of large firms to the detriment of smaller firms. Four, with respect to policy 110-165, competitive procurement, there is no requirement that the bidder use the e-Verify system to confirm that all employees are U.S. citizens or lawfully in our country. Five, I do not understand why if the solicitation is advertised, then two competitive bids are not required. Six, why is the threshold for competitive bidding on professional services set at $75,000? Thank you for receiving my comments.
Thank you. Next is Will Ruder.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. My name is Will Ruder, here on behalf of the Home Builders Association of Greater Kansas City, headquartered in Kansas City, Missouri, but a resident of Overland Park. I just wanted to come and talk a little bit about the proposed procurement policy change, certainly well within normal government operations to update procurement policies as they, as they occur. But I also wanted to talk about the definitions of workforce development. I want to compliment the Commission for emphasizing workforce development as a prioritization in their criteria. It is a significant investment of our time and energy at the Home Builders Association. In fact, the Olahtha Area Technical Center was the first secondary education center in the state of Kansas to adopt the Home Builders Institute curriculum. So young people are being exposed to the principles of the home-building industry through the course of their regular instruction, and it is producing young people that are matriculating into any number of trades within the Johnson County area. So we are truly building homes with homegrown talent, and it is a wonderful thing. We just want to make sure that the policies adopted by the Commission are not unintentionally exclusionary of those types of firms that these young people go into that may or may not maintain a Department of Labor-recognized apprenticeship program. We do not dictate that these young people go into a certain field or to certain firms that are structured in certain ways. We just know as a, as a, as a Home Builders Association, the majority of our membership are small and locally maintained operations that don't necessarily carry the compliance and the overhead necessary to comply with some of the requirements of the Department of Labor's apprenticeship program. So we're hopeful that perhaps the language can be modified or updated to be, perhaps be of the, of the statute in front of you to be a little bit more inclusionary of the broader workforce development efforts that are occurring within Johnson County. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I invite back Ms. Trent for questions and comments. And let me just say thank you to, to those who have commented on the item. And I understand and appreciate the focus that we have within the proposed amendment to the purchasing policy resolution here. The good thing about having a minimum set of standards is that it can be transparent, that we don't, as a county, have to recreate a wheel that allows us or requires us to take the time and expense necessary to have a new set of criteria that would be formulated simply for Johnson County. If we look nationally, and I believe the last time that the statistics were available was in 2021, there were more than 593,000 active apprentices within the United States, according to the Department of Labor pursuant to 29 CF9, Chapter 29, and, which is the chapter that sets those minimum standards for apprenticeships. While that includes, yes, large contractors, it also includes small contractors. As few as one apprentices is all that is necessary to qualify for that apprenticeship program. That apprenticeship program under Chapter 29 had 64% growth since 2012, and I believe that it's important for us... that it's important for us to have a standard by which we can then track our contracts and use thereof of apprenticeship programs. So while I fully understand and appreciate the comments, I like the language as it is because it allows us a, a great starting point, and we can continue to be intentional in the years to come about its impacts in our county, and hopefully we'll see the continued focus and reinvestment into workforce training as we continue to try to, try to grow Johnson County. So Commissioner Hanslick, then we'll go to Commissioner Allen Brand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Trent, I wanted to ask if you could help me better understand, this proposed amendment allows for a preference, but it doesn't say that there's a requirement to be considered that those firms, that firms can still apply and be part of the RFP process, that having an apprenticeship program is one of the criteria, or could be one of the criteria. It's not, it's not a requirement that they have that. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Chair and Commissioner Hanslick, as you explained, that is correct, that it doesn't preclude an individual from bidding. They can bid. Where it comes into play, as the language indicates in the proposed revision, is when there's a tie.
Yes.
And then at that point only would that be considered.
Thank you. I appreciate your clarifying that, because that, that was my understanding, that, that all things being equal, if, if one bidder has an apprenticeship program and everything else is equal, then that, that would be a preference for that bidder.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Allen Brand?
Thank you, Chair. Ms. Trent, thanks for talking to me this morning. I know that we're trying to put all the terminology along with state as well, but I really struggle with this one because being a small business owner myself in my past life, that, you know, you're going up, you know, it could come down to three people, and that small business owner in Johnson County could be then kicked out because of not being able to afford to have that. So I'm really, really struggling with this because I feel like we already have a lot of restraints on our contractors and just through the bidding process, so I'm, I'm really struggling with it.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Trent, I, I'm struggling also, but I, I think what I'm struggling with, what problem are we trying to fix? Have we, I mean, I, I read this on the surface, helping disabled vets and developing the workforce. I mean, those are noble intents. I get that, but when, when we start to granulate federal requirements into local decision points, what, what are we trying to fix?
Chair and Commissioners, this revision to particular policy is not fixing a problem, but looking more global. When you were requesting early on a few months ago to look at the definition of a responsible and responsive bidder, at that point was an examination of a state statute, which is comparable for state procurement, not bound by local, and we are under a Home Rule Charter. So at that point, it was just an opportunity to take a look at that statute, that it was cross-referencing for the preference for local businesses, which has been in existence for several years, and seeing if there are other opportunities to expand what we were doing and to do more in line with what we see in the state of Kansas. And from the review of state statutes, I did determine that the state of Kansas does have, for state procurement process, the preference related to individuals with disabilities and disabled veterans. In the state statute, it does, it does put at a disadvantage other businesses. I'm saying because it's a plus or minus 10, whereas you're written, as written is for bidding that are tied. So the other remaining item that was brought forward was a suggestion by a member of the board because of other skills, local skills, and others, programs that we were able to indicate in our community and a need that is growing to have an apprentice programs. With that said, and I think the Chair provided information, I know that staff through purchasing had done some research of other comparable statutes and ordinances just to get a flavor of what we're seeing out there, and that's where you do see this. But this one also was in Kansas City, Missouri, was where, across the border, that we were seeing this. So just for consistency in the region, this one seemed viable to include.
Thank you. Commissioner Brewer?
Just a few questions. I just want to follow up on some things that our speakers brought up. I appreciate Commissioner Hanslick reminding us that this is not the, the first priority, right, when we take in bids. This is really when we're in a situation where we're, we're peeling the onion, so to speak, and, and looking at, at very shades of differences on, on, on two equal bids that meet all other criterias and standards as set up out by the county and the department that's, that's putting out that RFP. There was a question around whether or not the, what has already been in our policy around a local presence, if it does or does not align with state statute. Can you speak to that a little bit?
Absolutely. I think the Speaker was referring to the preference policy, I believe, and the, currently we do have a preference policy that dealt with mirroring some language from state statute. When we modified it to include the other two preferences to expand it, we modified that, took that language to be in the more global paragraph that is referring to the other preferences. In addition, the language was already there, referring the readers to the state statute. I think that's best practices, so there's no confusion as to what that definition, because that could change from time to time, and so we want to be consistent with that for your policy. So that's why that was omitted. I think I answered your question.
You did, and, and so I'm glad you brought up that point, because we always have to recognize at the local level, when we're tying certain policies to state or federal policies, that those policies are not static, that they can be amended over time. As a matter of fact, when you look at statute, oftentimes they're going to note the date of which the statute has been amended, right? And so if we create static language within a document, and we're not constantly updating that for variable changes that could happen at, at different times within a cycle, so I'm assuming when I go out and look at these as a contractor, I would see a hot link that I could hit that would take me to the, to the source so that we can be affirmed that from the source, we are reading the most recent version of the statute that we're referencing.
Chair and Commissioners, thank you for that suggestion. As we look at our county code moving forward in the next year and updating, we will try to do that when we upload resolutions and your policy to have those hyperlinks for you to state statute, so thank you.
I appreciate that. Then another question, we, one of the other questions from one of our speakers, they referenced a high school program, and I might ask that speaker if that's okay to come back up. I'm just, if that's, we can't, okay. I'm just.
Sorry, consistency, sir.
Nope, not a problem. Just, just kind of a, a question regarding, once again, this policy around workforce development. We're trying to be consistent with Department of Labor policies, just so that we kind of have a, a concise definition. There may be other programs that exist, and we hope those programs at some point connect to the federal policy that, that we're referencing, but we're trying to stay within a window of understanding, so there's a, there's a consistent understanding of what these programs and, and apprenticeship programs and certifications look like.
Yes. Chair and Commissioner, thank you for bringing up this issue. As a matter of fact, staff, if this is approved today, the policy, the next step is for staff to develop procedure and how to implement this particular policy. And one of those could be explored on how we deal with what that speaker had said and how that would incorporate into that language, and we'll look into it legally if that would preclude it. But right now, you know, that's the next step, and this does not go into effect to the first of the year. That gives staff enough time to put together that procedure.
That helps me. And my last question is, there's three things that we have in, in, in the policy that I'm looking at, that we're talking about right now, around that preference policy, 110.125. And so when, when we are in a situation where we have same bids, right, and now we're going to the preference policy, what's the guidance we're giving to staffs and departments? Are they, are we looking for the contractor to align with all three? One of the three, two of the three? I mean, that would be the other thing, just for clarity, so we have an understanding of how this is going to be implemented.
Chair and Commissioner Brewer, that's what we will address in procedure.
Okay.
And we'll get, we'll drill down to get that, how that looks, and so that's the flexibility that will be provided, and that is procedure then adopted by the county manager.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
And just for the record, this won't go into effect until 2026.
Oh, did I say 27?
No, 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 no. I'm just clarifying for everybody, reinforcing. Mr. Fast?
Yeah, I guess I see this as, you know, benefits include, you know, Commissioner Ashcraft was asking, what are the benefits? I mean, that protection of taxpayer money from overruns and injuries, reduced costs associated with litigation, promoting skilled workers and local jobs, fostering economic, you know, ensuring ethical business practice in our contact, contracting process. So, I mean, I think this is what we're trying, you know, to do, and I found it interesting when we moved to the bank in Missouri, how many people contacted us about wanting a local bank. That was probably one of, besides property tax, the top email and call is how many people were mad that we went to a Missouri bank and didn't go local on that. And I know we did that because it saved money, but it just, to me, this highlights Johnson County's wants, you know, language like this, and I can, I can do a motion when you're ready.
Okay, I want to make sure everybody has a chance to talk first, but we'll come back to you for that motion. Commissioner Hanslick?
Thank you. Yeah, to me, this is, is a great opportunity to encourage and grow our, our local workforce and to, to maybe someone who is thinking of employing or working with an apprenticeship program, this might help them give more thought to that. You know, I'm thinking to Commissioner Allen Brand's concerns, you know, a small business, say a small HVAC business might say, hmm, maybe I'll check with Johnson County Community College to see if I can offer one of their students a, a spot working alongside my team. So I'm, I'm excited about this, and I think it's, it's completely in line with what we are trying to do in the county in terms of economic development and providing, or, or helping grow our own workforce and keep our own young people here in Johnson County. So I'm very supportive of this and appreciate the opportunity to support it.
All right, I think everybody's had at least an opportunity to speak at this time. We'll take a motion for Commissioner Fast, and then we'll continue our discussion.
I move that the Board of County Commissioners approve Resolution Number 115 dash 25, adopting amending, adopting amended purchasing policy numbers 110.125 and 110 dot point 165, effective January 1st, 2026.
Hanslick, second.
Moved by Commissioner Fast and seconded by Commissioner Hanslick. Continued discussion from Commissioner Ashcraft.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, Mr. Chairman, first of all, I very much appreciate having a policy discussion. I mean, that's what we should be doing. And this is, in some ways, a fairly significant new policy dimension. I really hadn't thought about it, and when you brought the issue up back in, I think it was June, I, I had not considered this. So in this past week, one thing I did was I reached out to a number of contractors that do business with us and generally in the county. And one thing I was told is, the big firms, I'm not going to name them, but the, the big firms pretty much across, or actually across the board said, we have these programs already. We compete not just in Kansas, but in Missouri, and, and we have to, and we, we are always trying to develop talent. The rub came with the, the smaller mid-side fir, mid-size firms, kind of as Commissioner Allen Brand pointed out, trying to understand and address their responsibilities and abilities to do that. They felt, they, they felt offered a, a level of concern and basically asked, you know, well, are, are these regulations necessary, and how will they drive up the complexity and cost of the process for them individually? And that, that was a, a very important point to me, because what I haven't been able to find, at least in my own brain, is, well, what is the compelling reason to invite in federal regulations, federal entitlements in terms of our purchasing process? While I oftentimes disagree and question, I have come to respect Ms. Lines and her staff. They're, they're very tenacious when it comes to trying to be fair and determined in their process, and, and I look at this, and I, I just am not comfortable with it. So, Mr. Chairman, my vote will reflect that concern.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Chair. Well, I'm not really sure how this is going to impact, or what kind of impact it's going to have, but I'm still in favor of, of this item because, you know, we need to put something into action like this and then see how it works. If it doesn't work, we can make revisions and changes to see how, if there's something that we're missing. Right now, I'm not alarmed at something that, that is going to result, that's causing me heartburn, but, but there's always those possibilities that we're going to come back and hear, for one reason or another, why this does or doesn't work, and then we can make revisions at that time. But I think it's a, a good process to go through and something to have us be involved in and, and have in our policy.
Commissioner Brewer, then Allen Brand?
So Commissioner Myers, I really, I really appreciate your framing, and so I guess I do have a, a question as we're thoughtful going forward, and we have to remember, this is a situation where this policy change does not impact any qualified bidder coming forward and bidding on a project. This is not a forward policy that this is a requirement to make the bid. This is when it gets down to when we have two equal bids with all other qualifications met, and we're trying to discern which bidder, this gives another nuance. Having said all that, I, I would imagine, or I would hope, our system could kind of collect the data that in those rare instances, because quite frankly, what I've seen so far, granted, I have not been here a full year, but we've had a number of project and purchasesings come forward to us, and very rarely have I seen the bid price or all other qualification aspects be exactly the same. So to me, this is an exception, not the rule, and so we're, we're finding a way to address the exception. Having said that, in those rare instances, as, as Commissioner Myers suggested, we can monitor if it's having a chilling effect for mid to small-sized businesses and what that looks like. Also, it sounds like in implementation, we have three different elements of, of our, of our preference policy, and we'll have a better understanding as you work through that, that, how that gets implemented. That impacts, because so too, a smaller mid-size business may feel like it, it's not able to compete with a bigger national firm that may not be headquartered here, but we're giving preference to keeping local business in local community and spending our dollars locally. So I really appreciate your framing, and I, I would concur that that's the approach that we take as we implement the policy.
Thank you. Commissioner Allen Brand?
Thank you, Chair. Well, I, I'm not going to support this. I just feel like I receive calls from small businesses. I just feel like... I just feel like that some of the two to three, you know, employees, the 10 to 15 firms that can't, you know, it's, I'm afraid it's just going to kick them out, the small businesses that are in Johnson County, doing the smaller projects that they have going is going to add more cost to it. So I'm concerned about it. I don't feel comfortable with it, so my vote's going to reflect that.
And I can appreciate that, Commissioner Allen Brand, and to Commissioner Ashcraft's point. And I think that there's always, when we're trying to be proactive with policymaking, which is our role, we're policymakers, that's what we're elected to do. And policy hopefully has impact for the organization, but also for the, the community. And when we implement policy, we try to do so in a responsible way, in a proactive way that has intended results. I appreciate the comments from Commissioner Myers and Brewer about being intentional on monitoring those impacts and continuing our role as policymakers to make adjustments as necessary to meet the needs of not only the organization, but the community. But I don't think we can just be led by fear. I think we need to have a proactive vision when we go through and make policy. And I think, in fact, could it encourage contractors to recognize that an apprenticeship program is not a boogeyman? That it is a value not only to the community, but to the organization itself, providing opportunities for future journeyman through an apprenticeship program and growing a workforce, growing a business, and growing a community? That is the intent behind the policy, and I'm happy to support it.
Commissioner Allen Brand?
Chair, sorry, can I make one more comment? I would feel more comfortable with this because that is the job that we are supposed to do as policy. But what's concerning to me is that I received calls from the community about loss of, you know, jobs. I would feel more comfortable if there was some sort of an informative training or something that would go out to the public saying, this is what we're going to do. This is suggestions that as a small business of those two to three or 10 to 15 employees that you could then qualify when it comes down to those last three businesses when they're all, you know, in the same pool. But there's no, there's nothing going out that I am aware of to, just that this showed up, you know, within our briefing sheets. And to me, I would feel more comfortable with that, that as we're doing this, something's going out to them to help them, like Commissioner Hanslick said, you know, partnering with Johnson County Community College, partnering with some of these other organizations. So that, Chair, that's where I have, I have the issue.
And that's why this goes into effect January 1st, 2026. That's why we have a period of time now to inform the community, to work with them, and to make sure that people understand these and that staff has an understanding of how they would be implemented. And so because it does not go into effect today, we have that opportunity. I hope we take it.
Commissioner Fast?
I think what may be helpful to you, Commissioner Allen Brand, in my seven years, there's hardly been any ties, you know? And so, I mean, Brent could give you the data. So, I mean, as Commissioner Brewer said, this is exception, this is a rarity. It's not preventing small businesses. I don't want this to be said that this is preventing small businesses. It's not. This is just helping decision-making on those instances where you have two equally, is that correct?
Chair and Commissioner Fast, that is correct.
Thank you. All right. At this time, I would ask Commissioner Allen Brand for the comment.
I'm struggling here. So, so you're, so what I'm hearing is there is something that's going to go out to the public, communication, a good communication piece, that's going to offer those small employee or those small firms, even all firms, of what they can do to be able to apply for these projects and ways for them to be able to work with, whether it be Johnson County workforce or whoever. Am I making sense? Is there something going out?
Chair and Commissioners, right now, I don't want to commit staff, but I can tell you that when they do send out bid documents, they do explain when those come into being, they explain what the preference is. There can be, and I will, I hear what you're saying to the county manager to-
Want to be proactive.
One at a time, please.
If there's a commitment to that, to the county manager.
Yeah, I'm just wanting to be proactive, and I feel like that's one thing that we-
I wrote it down.
-have a job of, you know? So, yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Hanslick?
Yeah, just on that note, I wanted to ask Ms. Trent. This policy, though, doesn't prevent contractors for having subcontractors that may not meet this criteria.
Correct.
And if they're that small, they may more likely to be a sub than the main contractor.
Correct.
Without further, Commissioner Ashcraft?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I very much appreciate the discussion. You made reference, though, that decisions based on fear. And I take somewhat exception to that. I understand what you're saying. But my, my concern is, I have a suspicion about federal entanglements and what that will require and what that could grow into. And I would just assume not have that linkage. So my, my vote will stand in terms of my concern.
Choose whatever adjective you want. All right. Without further ado, I ask for you to call the roll.
Commissioner Fast?
Aye.
Commissioner Myers?
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer?
Brewer, aye.
Commissioner Hanslick?
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
No.
Commissioner Allen Brand?
Allen Brand, no.
Chairman Kelly?
Aye. Five in favor, two against. Is that consistent with your count?
It is.
All right. Very good. At this time, we'll move on to a manager's report from our county manager, Ms. Postock Ferguson.
Chairman and Commissioners, good morning. I have three items for you. The first one, I would like Megan Leahy, Director of Administrative Services for Aging and Human Services, to come forward. We are highlighting another NACO award. This is three of the four this year, the third of the fourth that we were highlighting. And it's regarding summer snack packs and the impact it has on families that need, that have food insecurity. Megan, welcome and congratulations on the award.
Thanks, Penny. So as, as Penny mentioned, Megan Leahy, I am with Aging and Human Services, the Director of Human Services and Administration. And I want to introduce two other key staff who are here. If you'd raise your hand. Brandy Hodge is our Manager of Communications, Human Services and Administration. And Jenny Spurling is our Community Sport and Customer Service Supervisor. And Jenny was really our lead in getting this done. It was a team effort, but she was our, our go-to for that. So for Aging and Human Services, this is our first NACO award, at least that we're aware of. So we were really thrilled for that recommendation. This is work that was done in our Human Services Division. So that is a division. We have four offices in Johnson County. Three of them have food pantries. We also provide utility assistance, some limited rent assistance, and, and really try to work with clients to see what are their needs, what other resources can we connect them to. And one of the things that clients report and our staff have observed is that during the summer months, a lot of families with children who are in school have increased food insecurity. So hunger doesn't take a summer break. And that's really what led to this, what led to this project. Because while those children are in school, they often have access to free reduced lunches and some other social services and food supports. And in the summer, they, it's, it's harder to access a lot of that. So the challenge for our team was, what can we do to help those families during the summer months? And so our summer snack program was born. We launched it in the summer of 2024 with the goal of really providing some kid-friendly meals and snacks while they were home from school. This was provided to children of existing AHS clients, clients who are receiving services. And we distributed those at all four of our offices, our three food pantries plus our Elate the office. I talked about why we did this program, but some of the data and trends that we were seeing at the time, 54,400 people in Johnson County are reported as food insecure. And the poverty numbers, the 200% of poverty numbers is closer to 95,000. During this time in 2024, there were reductions in pandemic EBT programs. So during the pandemic in that time, there were increases for those who received SNAP, food SNAP benefits. And those increases went away. At the same time, as everybody knows, grocery store prices were increasing tremendously. So combination of that made it more difficult for families who were struggling with food. And the other thing we saw was some of our regular staple items provided in our food pantries weren't always kid-friendly. So a bag of rice or beans or a box of hamburger helper is not necessarily something that kids are able to prepare, or sometimes they, it's just not what they want to eat. So here is a picture of our, our snack packs. And you can see, it's, from what you can see there, there are a lot of kid-friendly items, single-serve mac and cheese, better known as Easy Mac, ramen noodles, pasta meals that you can pull or open easily, granola bars, individual fruit cups, crackers. We were able to add reusable lunch bags. So really focused on kids, things that they would eat, things they could make, providing some nutrition for them. The NACO awards have you highlight partnerships and collaboration. And so we really have to commend our grocery store partners who did their best to get us bulk pricing so that we could stretch the dollars further. They provided the paper bags for the snack packs. And then we're even kind enough to donate some insulated reusable lunch bags that the kids could have. Our staff did all of this work, existing staff. We didn't add any extra resources. They did it, all the work from planning to completion. Estimated about 50 hours department-wide for that. Every cent that we spent came out of our ARPA grant that, that you all awarded to us or that SLFRF federal funding. Every cent we used for food, we spent $19,836. So thank you for providing that support. For the program results, we served 403 kids. So that's 403 kids in Johnson County who we helped feed that summer. They came from 169 households. The direct cost on food was $49.22 for each bag, which was pretty efficient. And, you know, one of the, it's harder to measure, but the joy in these kids when they received it was just amazing. You can see a photo of a family there. You, you can see it in the picture, you can see it in their eyes. And it was just one stressor off of family to be able to have that. Beyond the numbers, we saw some internal benefits as well. It was just a real big morale boost for our team and our staff. We had people across teams working together on this, just increased the engagement and the energy. So, you know, folks who did financial work and payroll got to assist with this, and it was really exciting for them. It helped us strengthen some ties, public-private partnerships. You know, our department, no secret, we're struggling with the cost of food and providing services. So having those partners and vendors is really essential in helping us keep our, our prices down to provide those services. Feeding hungry kids might not sound like the most innovative idea, but this was really full of innovation because it was a departure from our typical model. We made this about kids and what works for kids. We felt like we found ways to do it that was cost-efficient. It's something we can replicate, it can be scaled up or down. Really minimal overhead and administrative costs went into this. I talked about how exciting it was for the kids. And really, it just helped us rethink how we do food pantry and, and what's going to work for families today. So we completed this in the summer of 2024. I wish I could sit here and tell you that we did it again in 2025 and report those numbers. But the reality was 2025 hit our food pantries really hard, so we had to focus our resources and energy on our, keeping our shelves and our staple items in the pantry. So we did put this program on hold. We are continuing to work on incorporating some of that client feedback in our pantry model, reducing barriers to accessing our pantry, and just continuing to build those community partnerships, particularly on the donation side, whether that's funding or food for our pantry. Within Human Services, you know, we continue to address food insecurity and help those facing economic hardships. And food is such an essential need. Kids can't learn or grow without it. People of all ages can't live their full lives. And so our goal is to provide that so that they can move on and thrive in their lives. So thanks for letting us present about this today.
Thank you very much, and congratulations on the NACO award. And thanks for taking an innovative approach to make life better for the kids in Johnson County. Commissioner Hanslick?
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Leahy. Appreciate that. Just a question, were the, were the, were the bags of food delivered, or did people come pick them up at the, the sites? How, how did they, how did they know to expect those bags?
So obviously, we had a limited number, so it was, it was kind of a first-come, first-served. We tried to be accessible to clients, so if they were already there for appointments, we could provide that to them, you know, not, they didn't have to come at a certain date or certain time to pick them up. If it, if they didn't have appointment, they could come and pick them up, and we were really flexible with that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Myers?
Well, just congratulations to all of you. Wonderful work, outstanding, in fact. And, and my biggest concern was, what's the future look like? Because I, I dealt with this as a teacher in school districts a great deal, and especially on the Missouri side. And the numbers are ever-increasing, aren't they? And, and so I think that collaboration with school district, now, again, there's some differences between Johnson County versus Missouri, where I was, in school districts. But they had such, on the Missouri side, they had more robust summer programs where sometimes you don't find the same situation in Johnson County as far as summer school-type programs and things of that nature. But there still has to be some, somewhere that, that collaboration that can take place. Because again, there is, people don't realize it, but there is great need. And, and like you said, the gratification and, and the enjoyment and the, the true need for nutrition for some of our families and especially children is, is great. So I hope that there's some, some type of, of work to where this program can not only continue, but to be able to expand. But I, I do think it's going to take collaboration with, with people from outside county services to make it all work. But I think it can happen. I've seen it happen. And so, again, thank you for all the work you did. Congratulations, well-deserved, and great recognition.
Commissioner Allen Brand?
Thank you, Chair. Well, I want to say congratulations as well, job well done. So do you, because I know Elate the schools, they have a very active program, but I don't know if they do anything during the summers. They have a, a staff member that's involved in, they actually help find housing for families that are homeless and providing food and, and Christmas gifts. Have, have we ever collaborated with them?
We do, we do work with the schools and communicate with them. And certainly, the schools do provide some summer meal programs. And, and we get that information to our clients if they don't already have it. A lot of times, there are a limited number of schools, you know, they don't do it at every school.
Right.
So the transportation piece can be difficult-
Right.
-for some. And so it, it is a collaboration, it's not a one-agency solution. And, you know, we felt, we filled the need for some of our clients, but it's, it's definitely a greater need.
I felt like you really filled a, a gap, you know, where the schools are looking at school-age children, and these children appear to be a lot younger, so, and they don't take care of the whole family. So, thank you.
Thanks. Thanks.
Commissioner Brewer's next.
So I, what I really enjoyed about the presentation, and congratulations for the work and the effort, and I think you already know this, and I want to make sure everybody knows this, we do have a really large nonprofit agency, Harvesters, that serves the Bay State area with weekend backpacks and such, but we also know there's capacity limits, right? And having worked with that agency, and having worked, quite frankly, when my own kids were in school, one of my fellow PTO members started their own nonprofit to help with weekend backpack programs in the school buildings that couldn't be reached by the Harvesters' program. So, you know, you see a gap and a need, and you're filling that gap and need. And what I really liked in the presentation is you talked about some of the new, you know, deepening partners with food, partnership relationship with food vendors and establishing new relationships. Sometimes it's not an and, it's not an or, it's an and. And in this case, when we talk about food insecurity with children, it's an and, it's as many programs that can collaborate and work together to, to get, expand the reach as much as possible. So I appreciate that you stepped into that area, and I, like Commissioner Myers and Commissioner Allenbrand, are hoping that we can find a pathway forward, right, to, to move the program from hold status into re-establishing it. But I appreciate that you ventured in and used the dollars in this manner. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Megan and team, thank you for being here. Congratulations. And when a NACO award recognizes a program like this, we are hopeful that other communities emulate that across the country, and I think you guys are setting the example, so thank you. The next item, I'd like Kayla Holloway to come forward, our HR Director. You may have seen this in the memo, but Johnson County was named in the top five employers in the state of Kansas for the 2025, for 2025 by Forbes National Survey. That's quite a distinction, and Kayla's here to give a little bit more detail. Kayla?
Thank you. Good morning, Commission and Commissioners and Chair. Yes, we're excited to, to have this, this recognition from Forbes. Again, we, we were recognized in February, as you know, as one of America's top midsize employers across the United States, and on a national stage, that's really exciting. And then, again, to be recognized here as the, as the number-five employer in the state of Kansas, the only government entity named on that list. So it's very exciting, but interestingly enough, it's not new to us, right? It's exciting because we've been on these lists for a number of years, and it's, it's kind of how we operate. It's just, it's normal, the way we do business here. And what's exciting about that is that it's a real reflection of the employees that we have here that are passionate about the work they do, the services they deliver, they come to work and they're excited to be here. And I think that's exciting, the things that were, were surveyed, and to get to this recognition, 160,000 employees of employers of at least 500 people were surveyed to create the list. And among those, and on that survey, respondents were asked to provide information on wage parity, work culture, and paths to professional advancement. So that's an area, those are all areas that we excel in here at Johnson County, and I think we can be very proud of that, about, proud of the work that we're doing. And as you know, we're, we're going through some transition in human resources to continue that work and to be able to provide the services that we deliver to the employees and the employee experience every single day. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Allenbrand.
Thank you, Chair. Well, congratulations to you and your team, and I do have to say, I really like your new digs. I, I felt like there was a lot of planning that went into that, in creating spaces for people to get together and work together, and, so anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes, congratulations, and, and I would say this needs to be shouted from the highest hilltop. I think it's a very important recognition. As a head coach, I understand that when things go good, the head coach gets the credit. So county manager, this is a real feather in your cap. Congratulations to you, but we all know that you can't do it on your own. You have to have that team, and we have a wonderful team, that, that leadership that put us in this position. I think when you receive the feedback from your employees of what type of employer you are, it doesn't get any better than that. But we're also hearing from the public in our surveys of what we're hearing from our residents on how Johnson County is as an organization. And this is another real example that people sometimes don't hear enough about, that, that really shows what type of organization Johnson County is, and what the work that they do. So I want to congratulate you, you know, as that head coach, when things go well, you get a lot of the credit. When things go bad, guess who they go after? But, anyway, wonderful job, and, and let's keep it going.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Myers, as always, you're one step ahead of me. I appreciate you and your comments related to the county manager and her staff, as well as Ms. Holloway. There are a lot of moving parts, and, and all in all, that staff works hard, and, and this is good, fair recognition. But one clarification, though, I thought there were also some school districts that maybe weren't as high as number-five, but there were a couple-
I believe there were. Johnson County government was the only government entity that was named.
Yeah. And we should be proud of that. Thank you.
Very much so. And I just want to say, it is, this is so exciting to hear this from the public. I think to hear it from our own employees is maybe even more meaningful, and our engagement results reflect that eight out of 10 employees here are satisfied and plan to stay and are thrilled to work here. So I think that is a real testament.
Definitely a team effort, and part of that component is the competitive wages and benefits, and that's a testament to the board to support our employees. As you've really made an effort after COVID, when the workforce crisis across the world was happening, our board supported our employees. So that's a big component of it as well. So definitely a team effort. Thank you for sharing that with us today. Next item is a notice of public hearing. So the city of Leewood will conduct a public hearing on Monday, October 6th, to consider the establishment of a redevelopment district. The proposed district is located northwest of State Line Road and College Boulevard in Leewood, Kansas. The project consists of office buildings, a hotel, an event center facility, residential buildings, retail buildings, and ancillary facilities. The total development investment is expected to be approximately $750 million. A copy of the notice of public hearing is attached. The county has 30 days from the date of the public hearing, again, that's October 6th, to adopt a resolution stating that the TIF district would adversely impact the county. And Chairman, with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Hansel.
Thank you for that report, County Manager. I just wanted to mention, I did reach out to Diane Stoddard with the city of Leewood. I was just curious if, what other TIF districts Leewood had, and she informed me that Leewood does not have any existing TIF districts, and she said importantly, that proposed district would involve property tax only and not sales tax. So I thought it was kind of interesting that apparently this is going to be their first tax increment financing district.
Thank you. Commissioner Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. County Manager, do you know when we will be receiving the cost-benefit analysis? Will it be within that 30-day window?
So, oh, Erin Wynn's here. I don't know if you want to speak to that. She did reach out to them and ask about timing on documents. I think they said they would have some more information by the end of this month, is that correct?
Yes, that's it. That's the answer, by the end of the month. So pending any, any big change, we'll forward that copy on as soon as we get it. So it'll be in advance of the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, very good. We'll continue with Commissioner comments at this time. How about Commissioner Myers? Give him a second to get his thoughts organized.
Yeah. Thank you, Chair. Two meetings that I had this week, one was Johnson County Parks and Recreation District. We had a COW where we talked about our CIP. That information is available for all to see, but it was a very good meeting, very informative. Then I, last night, I attended the Solid Waste Management Committee meeting. We had a presentation of the Solid Waste Management Plan Annual Update, and I am getting ready to send that out to all the commissioners if you need some extra reading material.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Brewer?
Thank you. I had the opportunity to attend the Johnson County Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board meeting Tuesday of this week. I am the liaison. We had some different action items that, that that body had to pass, including the agency case plan, the Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board Report, and budget adjustment. In the midst of this, the budget adjustment was really reflecting some grant dollars that come through the state, and how they can be used to help youth as they're moving out of maybe a justice-involved situation into stability. Some of these funds are permissible to use as that child is in what we call the transitional age youth, age group, that 18, in this case, 18 to about 22 age group. And one of the things that we had a good discussion on is, is there we, there may be some updates to statute on what's permissible through this grant, because as we talk about housing needs, currently, it looks like statute and policy is pretty restrictive to what's called transitional housing. And if your community that doesn't have transitional housing, and that's a very prescriptive program of a certain type of housing, certain type of programs, certain length of time, it makes it hard to use that, those funds in a way that's still transitional in the housing. If we think about it, sometimes providing rent assistance or other housing supports to relaunch a youth who's been justice-involved as they move into stability. So good discussion, and, and hopefully, we can have that discussion with some of our state legislators to maybe think about some of those policies that are, that are, can restrict the very thing that we're trying to do. I appreciate the chair's comments today regarding 9/11, and certainly, it is something that, that you can kind of, when you, when the day comes, you, you wake up and you remember where you were when. I do want to share and remind folks that we do have a 9/11 memorial here in Johnson County in Overland Park, and it's an opportunity to go and reflect and remember, especially for those first responders who stepped into, stepped into a building that was, and into situations that were highly charged and highly dangerous. So if you're not familiar, that's at 12401 Hemlock. So it's between 124th and 125th Street, over by the, kind of back and, and a little bit south and, and east of the post office, that's off of Antioch there in Overland Park. So just wanted to share that, and with that, that concludes my comments.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Fast?
Yes, this past week, I attended the Siri Board meeting. I've never been, I know Commissioner Allenbrand's been going. I highly recommend, you know, it's been hard even for me to get to every board in the county, but I'm about there. It just, the information, where, you know, we're going into really economic, challenging times, and I found the information really informative, job growth, and have the Johnson County information, job growth has slowed, unemployment has ticked up, consumer spending is slowing, people are going to lower-cost items. And just hearing all the economic development directors around the table, what they're seeing, some multifamily are not, used to be, soon say, announce a unit, it would get rented up right away. I mean, that's slowing somewhat. So they're coming for a study session in October. I think what really hit me, the importance of this group that didn't before, is with what's happening with the National Bureau of Labor Statistics, making that more partisan, moving that from an independent professional agency to be at the political whims of the administration, and that what Siri gives us is independent data that is not tampered by politics and professional data, which is going to be harder and harder for development, developers to get from the federal government. And this is really a resource that we can provide to recruit businesses, that businesses know that our data has not been tampered with. So that really hit me at the meeting in these times that I would have never thought that you couldn't trust the Bureau of Labor Statistics.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I will just thank you and Commissioner Brewer for your comments related to 9/11. It's one of those things that, it hangs over us, and I had noticed there was some publication that said there were 2,977 victims of 9/11. I'm not sure how, who they include and how they determine, but it was a significant event, and it, it was one of those events that, I think Shakespeare said something about letting loose the dogs of war. It led this nation into an era of challenges, not just in that region, but worldwide. And when those things happen, other nations have responded accordingly, and it causes a lot of, lot of, lot of death and destruction and heartache for a lot of people, and, and that's our event. But I also wanted to note, Mr. Chairman, that yesterday was World Suicide Prevention Day, and our Department of Mental Health has been working diligently to try to improve the lot and lives of Johnson Countyans, and I wanted to thank them for those efforts. And I was going to mention one final observation, and this individual, he was here earlier but left, but last week was Assistant County Manager Adam Norris's birthday, so Adam, happy birthday.
Commissioner Allenbrand?
Thank you. Well, Commissioner Fast already reported on the Siri Board, so I do have all those slides that I'm going to forward over to everyone, and they also include wage analysis of the county workforce. Attended Northwest Consolidated Fire Department meeting Tuesday night, and the fire station is on track. They're hoping that they are probably going to have a ribbon-cutting the second week of December, so as soon as I get those dates, I'll let you know. I too want to say something about 9/11, but very concerned about the rally and how politics and people are targeted. I think it's very sad, that's one reason why I really wanted to support those motorcycles and all the other things with the Sheriff's Department. I think more and more, I'm hearing complaints, you know, several came from the live area and events that they had there, and I think it's just saddening to me that we are faced with that in our times now. This past week, I had four complaints on the DMV. I just want to thank Mr. Franzen and the work that they're doing there. I mean, it's just a difficult task, and I feel like the staff's doing a really good job. I just think that they have such restraints right now. Also, the county manager, I wanted to let you know, I just sent you some photos from the courthouse lawn. I had several people come up to me yesterday. The weeds have taken over the front of the building, some as high as my waist. So I sent you those pictures. I don't know who's responsible, if that's the city or us, but I just wanted to make you aware, so I sent you photos. Thank you.
Commissioner Hansel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I too am thinking a lot about September 11th, 24 years ago, and wanted to mention that if you are in New York City and have the opportunity to visit the National September 11th Memorial Museum, it is a very, very moving experience. And in fact, I follow on Facebook that the National September 11th Memorial Museum has a Facebook page, and as we're speaking today, they have a live stream where every, the name of every victim in that tragedy is read by family members. And so if you go to that Facebook page, you can, you can see that. But it's, if you do get to New York, it's, it's a very moving museum and memorial. Yesterday, I attended the Commission on Aging, and they had asked me to share with the Board that- on Aging, and they had asked me to share with the board that they approved their 2026 legislative platform. And I won't read the whole thing, but I'll just, the highlights are in regard to state issues. They are supporting tax relief for low-income older adults, including the expansion of eligibility for the current property tax relief programs for older adults, as well as affordable and accessible housing for older adults. They're also supporting voting accessibility, particularly protection of voting accessibility for older adults. And third, they are supporting expanding Medicaid in Kansas. In terms of federal issues, they support the renewal of the Older Americans Act. Johnson County receives 2.3 million from the OAA, and that amount is at risk. And that, that, that fund supports our nutrition programs. So that's a big concern for the Commission on Aging. And they also support continued federal funding for Medicare counseling through the Senior Health Insurance Counseling for Kansas program, or SIC, which this board, I think it was last year, we expanded some funding for that here in the, in Johnson County. So I'm sure we will be hearing more about that as we go through our legislative, our own legislative platform. But I wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you very much, everybody, for your comments and the good work that's going on. Before I forget, I will note that there is no county commission meeting next week, September 18th. We'll be back on September 25th. I'd be remiss, though, if I didn't take an opportunity to recognize the moment we're in. We did talk about 9/11 and the harrowing nature of that moment in our country, but we find ourselves at another harrowing moment based on the political discourse in this country. It is not a day that goes by that there is not some other reminder that the more radicalized politics that we find ourselves with, and the support for violence to further those political aims, we see reminders of that way too often, whether it be the tragic murder of Mr. Kirk yesterday, or whether it be just several weeks ago, the murder of the Speaker of the House in Minneapolis. And so we find ourselves at really difficult times. And I would be remiss also if I didn't recognize that there was yet another school shooting yesterday in Colorado. It is up to, I think, us as a nation to come together and recognize that although we may have strong political feelings, and I do, that we are not each other's enemies, that we are all Americans, that we are all human beings, that we all have infinite worth and value. And to recognize that humanity in each other needs to be the beginning of the conversation more often than, well, which party are you? And so I will do my best to continue to look in the mirror every morning and realize what actions that I can take to improve the discourse in this country. And I'd ask everybody to join me in doing that, so that here in Johnson County, in the state of Kansas, in the metropolitan region, hopefully in America, that we can return to a better time of discourse and really recognize and enjoy the freedom of feeling safe, whether it be coming to a county commission meeting, or going to a public event, or going to school, or to church. There's more that we can be doing, and I welcome anyone, whether you're elected or not, to join me in bringing down the temperature and finding ways that we can recognize that humanity in each other moving forward. And I appreciate that everybody on this dais, everybody in this room shares that sentiment. And so let's start with ourselves, but let's work together to see how best we can move our community back towards that fundamental freedom of feeling safe in our public spaces. We do have an executive session. I believe we all deserve a break. So we're going to come back here at 11:30, and then we're going to take a motion for an executive session, then we're done for the day. No agenda review, no special sessions. Thank you, Mr. Harkness, for always sticking around. Appreciate you. But we'll be in recess until 11:30. Thank you.